Attending remotely, I would like to verify your presence. Please turn your camera on if you are able to. Trustee Ohan Chanata, thank you. Trustee Kelly?
Yes, here online.
See Yebor?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Call to order, good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular board meeting with the Alton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, May 28th, 2025. Please note that SMG is being livestreamed and will also be posted on the Board's YouTube channel. Trustees, in order to be recognized, please use the handoff feature in Teams to be automatically placed in queue. And please remember to turn your mics on when you speak. Item 1.1, Land Acknowledgement, the opening prayer, Our Father and National Anthem. Trustee McGuire, could you please lead us? So I'll ask staff to lead us with the land acknowledgement first and then company.
Alton, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandaran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surround me greatly.
Are steeped in indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty lands.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands.
Waters. Plants. Animals. And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you, student trustee McGuire, could you please lead us in the opening prayer, Our Father?
Yep. Uh, so then, since May is the month of Mary, um, I wanted to say a prayer to, I guess, um, honor our Blessed Mother. So if you could join me inside of our faith. Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Remember, oh most gracious Virgin Mary, that it was never known that anyone who fled to thy protection implored thy help or thought thine intercession was left unaided. Inspired by this confidence, I flee unto thee, oh Virgin of virgins, my mother, do thee I come, before thee I stand, sinful and sorrowful. Oh Mother, the word of incarnate, my mutations, but in thy clemency, hear me and answer me, amen. And I would ask that we, uh, you join me in, um, our Lord's Prayer. So, Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not to temptation, deliver us from evil. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee McGuire. Item 1.2 motions arising from in-camera, there was one motion, uh, requiring a vote in the public session. I'll read the motion, resolved, the property matters discussed in-camera be approved. May I have a move for this item, please? Trustee Carabella moves. Trustee Sanders seconds, I'll take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Uh, Vice Chair Murphy? Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Sanders, in favor. Trustee Ohan Chanata?
In favor.
Trustee Philbert?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Yebor?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell? Trustee Kennedy? So we have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention, motion carries. Uh, we shall now move on to the approval of the agenda. Uh, can we have the agenda, please? Yeah, thank you. Uh, do we have any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? And do trustees want any item to be removed from the consent agenda? Yeah, can you, trustee Sanders?
Uh, 6.1, 1.2, 4 from the consent agenda.
6.1 point. Point four? Yeah. One second. Thank you, trustees, any other trustees? Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to remove 6.1, 1.2, 3. The student mental health and well-being policy.
Okay, any further changes to the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Looking, uh, trustee Sanders moves. Trustee Carabella, seconds. I'll take this to a recorded vote. Check, okay. Uh, yeah, voting on the approval of the agenda as amended, uh, Vice Chair Murphy? Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Sanders?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanata?
Opposed.
Trustee Philbert?
Abstained.
Trustee McGuire?
Abstained.
Trustee Yebor?
See as well.
Sorry, I didn't hear you. Trustee Yebor? Can you repeat it, trustee Yebor?
Abstained.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell? Trustee Kennedy? Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
So we have, we have six in favor, two opposed, the abstention, uh, motion carries, the agenda is approved. The agenda as amended is approved. Shall now move on to declarations of conflict of interest, item number three. Trustees, do we have any conflicts to be declared? Trustee Sanders?
Yeah, I have a conflict in 6.1, 1.2, 4.
6.1, 1.2, 4, okay. There is a form to be filled out, uh, filled out with, uh, Elizabeth Rose. Thank you, trustees. Uh, our next order of business is presentations, item 4.1, Senior Staff Updates, Curriculum Services. Director Klein, please introduce the presentation.
Thank you, Chair, with, uh, great pleasure and great pride, I'll turn this over to Superintendent, uh, Kroll. And, um, there's a lot of, uh, things that are going on at this school board that helps students realize their full potential. And one of the ones I think we've been fairly renowned for is STEAM, or STEM, or other versions of that. Something that makes us proud, something that's been, uh, a priority of this school board for many years, and continues to be so, so I'll turn it over to Superintendent Kroll. Thank you, uh, good evening trustees, it's my pleasure to bring Matt Kovacs back, Matt's a friend, he's been here many times. Hi, everyone. Um, and Matt's gonna talk sort of through some of the many things that have been going on with this board STEAM initiative this year. I've asked him just to provide highlights as we own, we don't have several hours to go through this. Um, but there's certainly lots to talk about, so I'll turn number to Matt, so good evening, Matt.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Uh, good to see everybody again in everybody's faces. Um, it's a shame that I don't have seven hours, but that's, that's okay. So, yeah, we've kept to a very condensed version of, uh, what we've been able to, um, kind of maintain and proliferate throughout the year. Um, so this is basically just a high-level summary of, uh, everything through STEAM or that we've done through our STEAM board priority, uh, in 2425. I'm sure. Okay, um, so, again, very condensed, uh, broke this down into, uh, a mix of highlights, um, and things that, uh, we've seen throughout the school year so far. What's next? So I always like to kind of project forward, um, you know, what we have planned in leading into the next school year. Uh, and of course, time for questions, uh, at the end, so, get it. Um, so some major highlights, uh, included some photos from various events that, um, have taken place just over actually the past few months. Um, so the, I also included, um, or we included embedded links, uh, so you can click on it to get a little bit more information. Um, so for example, our interdisciplinary, or interdisciplinary programs, uh, that run, uh, inner secondary schools. We do have now three STEAM interdisciplinary programs, starting in grade nine, Notre Dame, St. Ignatius of Loyola, um, and St. Francis Xavier. Uh, so we do have those moving forward. Um, many of them are reporting, uh, higher applications this year, which is great to see over the multi-year implementation we have of those programs. Um, and for a reminder, or a reminder for all of you, that those programs are, uh, year-long, uh, curriculum blended with, uh, four different subjects typically in periods one and two, uh, in those schools. Uh, moving along to our STEAM Innovation Showcase, of course, we just kind of short-form it to CIS and BASEF. Um, so we, over the past, uh, actually, I believe this was our third year. Um, so for the showcase in BASEF, we try to align them around the same time so that students aren't necessarily having to double their efforts if they're entering projects in BASEF. So for CIS, we center around innovative, uh, inventions, unique, uh, solutions to problems. Um, and in the past, we tried to align it with the BASEF criteria so that students can just streamline. Uh, I actually posted a link there for an article that our amazing communications team, uh, posted just a few months ago with some of these summary of results. We do have one student, uh, I believe from Bishop Reading, that is heading to the Canada-wide Science Fair. Um, so there is a breakdown of all the awards. Um, I was joking with Superintendent Kroll that, uh, it's funny that we see about two or three more awards every year. So, you know, we're getting there, uh, we'll have all of them soon. Um, so, leading into then, of course, uh, two of our other focuses, um, or FOKI, that we decided to try to continue and maintain this year. Uh, so we did see, of course, robotics and esports. Um, we hosted our major in-person one, this time we did it in the fall instead of the spring. Um, our partnership with Notre Dame through their Shism, or Special High Schools Major Program made that possible. Um, so that was a, uh, actually, you can see the photo on the very top, uh, for anybody who's able to join, it's a pretty bumpin' event. Uh, we have over 200 kids, uh, in a cafeteria with lights and sound and all of the electric, um, feelings. Um, so it's great. Uh, and then we just recently finished our, uh, Minecraft esports event, which embeds curriculum connections into the challenges. We have teacher judges that come out to make sure it's connected to curriculum. Um, and we see a mix of students, we had, uh, again, over 200 students participate in that one. Uh, and I believe we had about 47 or 48 teams at the St. Ignatius Loyola Cafeteria. Um, so it was a very successful event. And you can actually see a photo there from the provincials, sorry, I'm pointing this way. Provincial, uh, first robotics event where we had three of our high schools, um, attend and compete. Uh, slide. Uh, some other highlights, uh, so we are actually wrapping up next week our STEAM credential program. Uh, so it's an after-school series of about eight modules, uh, where we have educators from across the system come out and learn about all things STEAM. Um, so some of the topics include, uh, indigenous knowledge systems within STEAM, equity, representation in STEAM, assessment and evaluation, uh, and our last session will be on artificial intelligence and machine learning next week, which of course has been a very hot topic. Uh, we have about 30 candidates, um, and it's going extremely well, so next week will be the wrap-up for that. Uh, this year, we also continued our implementation of elementary maker spaces. Um, so typically they are a two-year partnership, uh, between ourselves, facilities, uh, and of course, the school. So we try to combine resources, uh, between the three of us, uh, to be able to implement, uh, school maker spaces within Library of Learning Commons. Um, uh, again, continuing that partnership. Um, and of course, uh, machine learning, uh, we really did see in the fall this start to pick up, um, as different committees have come together, guidelines being worked on and released. Uh, and we do anticipate a lot of work into next year around this topic. Um, hard to avoid it, of course, because it's embedded in pretty much everywhere, everything. Uh, slide. Uh, already mentioned STEAM programs, increased number of applications. Uh, the one thing I did wanna quickly highlight here is that we are seeing, uh, early, but interesting data showing, uh, improved student achievement, uh, because we are combining different subjects together. Um, so for example, uh, we are seeing it in the grade nine math course, which tends to be taught very strongly alongside grade nine science. Um, so that's, those are some results we are gonna keep an eye on over the next, uh, while, to see if we can pull anything from that. Uh, between our innovation showcase and our esports events, uh, we've, of course, engaged over a thousand students at this point this year alone. Uh, upcoming events, we do have an upcoming event, um, on May 29th, again, next week, tell it's a busy time of year. Um, it was centered around machine learning and AI, uh, PPM 128. Uh, and then, we also have, which I believe have, I have on a future side, or slide, sorry, our lecture hall project at St. Ignatius of Loyola that's reaching its critical, um, milestone, uh, which I will share momentarily. Uh, slide, please. Uh, so did want to, uh, briefly highlight this as well, I'm not gonna go in-depth. Um, I think we'll likely bring back a more fulsome, uh, overview and report of this particular project, uh, perhaps in a future board meeting. This one, though, is a project we have been working on between ourselves, facilities, IT, uh, and the school, St. Ignatius of Loyola, to renovate, uh, what was previously, uh, unusable classroom space into a fully, um, immersed, uh, modern space. Uh, so we began in February 2023, uh, we've been working together since, and we're hoping to do a soft launch, so not a full launch, just, we are finally gonna be able to get into the space in a few weeks, with the full launch coming in fall. Um, again, I believe that's a clickable link up top, if you wanna see the article posted a few months ago, uh, again, by our amazing Stracom team. Uh, and you can see a, uh, before and after photo of, uh, before, of course, up top, uh, after the seating in the lecture hall was removed versus to the last week photo I took, uh, of the space below. Um, so you can see a lot of, um, effort has gone into that project over the past few years. Oh, yeah, the purpose, yeah, that'd be great. Uh, so, yeah, that's fair, you might wanna know about that. Um, so the purpose is meant to be not only a collaborative space where we can bring in different groups from around the system based on initiatives, uh, it's also meant to be a teaching space, uh, so if there are classrooms within the school such as the STEAM program that need a little bit more oomph, um, the equipment in there is, tends to be a bit higher-end, uh, than we might see in a comtech classroom at another one of our, uh, high schools. Um, and also, uh, we are hoping that the event would be a space for us to be used for some of those multi-day esports events, uh, more robotics events where we might be able to engage, uh, and also do video game design, artificial intelligence. So you can tell it's a really, it's a multi-purpose space, so a lot of different perspectives, opinions, uh, et cetera, have shaped it over time. Um, and yeah, we're really excited to be able to finally get in and use this space. Uh, and I think, oh, yep, what's next? So, you can, uh, see we have a, of course, some of the work that we are planning to continue. So machine learning and AI is a part of our renewed strategy that I presented, or the, sorry, that we presented last year at the meeting. We are going to be seeing, of course, increased emphasis on that. Um, we're seeing it as a major priority. Uh, equity in STEAM, uh, one of the first soft-launch events that we're gonna be have, having in the space, for example, will be for, uh, the under-representation of girls and women in STEM and STEAM. Um, so continuing some of those equity-based events in STEAM, uh, is, continues to be one of our goals. Uh, assessment and evaluation, um, community partnerships, interdisciplinary education, uh, interdepartmental collaborations, trying to break down the barriers that we have internally to work together towards common goals. Uh, micro-learning PD, uh, this is one we had actually tried in curriculum at one of our last PD days, which is to compartmentalize and try to shrink and deliver in-time PD. Um, so we will likely see an increase in that. And we are coming up on the second round of our STEAM strategy renewal. So hopefully into next year, we may look at, uh, renewing that strategy. And of course, any questions?
Thank you.
Just a quick question, you mentioned that you're moving the Innovation Stair, um, um, Innovation Showcase to the fall, is that right? Do you know when it'll be next year?
Sure, for you, Chair. Um, so the Innovation Showcase, we're not planning on moving, cause the timing of it tends to align with BASEF, which is around the March time period. We did, though, this year have to move our, uh, major in-person esports event, um, at Notre Dame.
Okay.
Just due to the timing of the Shism program and, um, staffing there.
So it's, is next March again?
Yeah, 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 uh, no plans to move, sorry, for you, Chair. Uh, well, if they are willing to host us again.
Okay. And the second question, the strategy, is that available online?
Trustee Sanders?
Chair, the strategy, is it available online, is it posted, the STEAM strategy?
I believe so, but I can check.
Yeah, yeah, send me, please, I'm sure, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Philbert?
Um, I just wanted to add that Lauren, Isabel, and I all go to schools that involve STEAM, and it's really a crazy thing to see all the grade nines and all the grade eights super excited about the program. So, while I find it really interesting to know all the behind-the-scenes, I just know that right up front, this is something students are really interested and care about, so we're all really glad to see that it has great feedback.
Thank you. Uh, trustee McGuire?
Um, yeah, I also wanted to echo that statement as well, I go to Loyola myself, and I've witnessed the development of the whole, um, like, lecture hall to like STEAM space, uh, development, and it's been really, really cool. A lot of my friends are very involved in STEAM at Loyola and stuff, and they've really benefited from it, specifically our robotics team, but also too, we do a lot of STEAM outreach, so we really appreciate the board's support and stuff, and your support as a STEAM department as well. So we just wanted to thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren, for, for raising that, we've been really grateful for the partnership with Loyola, as they were the, the, like, the sort of the, the first ones to try having a STEAM program, they piloted it for us, and now we've been able to spread it to two other schools. So we're really grateful for the administration and the staff, students there for their, their enthusiasm and their willingness to try something new, so thank you.
I have a couple of questions. What's our plan for, uh, girls in STEAM? Have we, do we have any initiatives to do?
Sure.
Um, so, one of the, the initiatives that has actually, uh, been on our mind all year, that we're just waiting for construction phases of the esports, uh, project to come together, is that we were really conscious about wanting to do the girls-only empowerment event on June 12th. Um, so that's from the get-go, uh, an event that we're putting together with, uh, sponsors, partnerships. Um, I can't speak to who exactly will be represented there yet, but we are planning on having role models, student mentors. Um, so that in particular is within our capacity right now to be able to get off the ground. Um, so that will be our first one. Um, but projecting into next year, I can't say yet at the moment. Um, we are hoping to, um, to do another event in the fall with the hard launch of the space, but again, depends on the partnerships. If I can add, though, it is part of our STEAM strategy to make sure that we have equitable representation in our STEAM program, so we are looking at, you know, students from a, from a variety of different backgrounds, uh, exceptionalities, genders, to make sure that we're providing equitable opportunities for all of our students. So definitely is front of mind for us in our STEAM strategy.
One more question, and I don't wanna put you on the spot, uh, so we have had a roadmap in the past 2018. Uh, how, uh, what's our progress there, are we doing better than the roadmap, or are we stalled somewhere?
I can start, um, I would say that, so we're in this sort of second version of our roadmap. I think we would say we were successful in terms of increasing the profile of STEAM across the system, uh, through our makerspace, makerspace programs, um, the, the three schools running the dedicated STEAM, uh, the amount of students participating in esports. Uh, I would say that the, the ceiling continues to work, to sort of, to raise, so, um, we, we wanna see more students involved in STEAM programming, I think there's interest in elementary STEAM programming as well, which we've had discussions about, uh, and certainly the, um, incorporation of AI into education, I know the ministry is coming out with more information, um, for school boards, but we're not waiting. We certainly wanna make sure that our teaching staff are prepared and ready for the integration of AI. So we've done training for our staff throughout the year, Matt mentioned the micro, or the, um, STEAM credential program, we're anticipating, um, AI sort of being the next frontier, something that we didn't anticipate in our initial STEAM strategy was the rise of AI as quickly as it was, especially in the education sphere. Yeah, sure, actually, I can, sorry, I can also build off that, when we developed our, uh, you know, quote-unquote renewed strategy last year, that's 2023 to 2026, um, or 2024 to 2026, the, we had incorporated AI, for example, as one of the new goals that had never been included in the original roadmap, uh, anticipating it could become large, and that was, of course, before we actually started to see some of the power that it really holds. Um, so, uh, you know, reiterating, um, we did morph the second strategy after completing many of the goals that we had outlined in the first as a part of the STEAM Steering Committee. Um, and really, we're trying to be ahead of the curve, right? Um, and I think we've had success in doing that.
Thank you, thank you, Superintendent Kroll, thank you, Mr. Kovacs, for your presentation. I must also thank, uh, Superintendent Del Sordo and the superintendents, uh, that have been greatly involved in STEAM and as a part of the team. So, so thank you so much, and kudos to all our teachers who have been putting all their efforts into supporting our students. Excitement I see, I'm no stranger to this, so, so thank you so much for coming and presenting, and really appreciate the good work being done across our system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, with that, we move on to delegations, there are no delegations tonight. Our next order of business is consent agenda. Uh, the following items, can we have the agenda, please? The following items have been agreed upon, the consent, uh, the agenda approved to stay on the consent agenda. Item 6.1, uh, action items, 6.1, 1.1, uh, minutes, 6.1, 1.2, we have, we have two items, 6.1, 1.2, 1, and 6.1, 1.2, 2. Uh, we have a whole lot of noted items, there'll be a single motion to approve the action items, and, uh, There'll be a single motion to approve the action items, and there will be no discussion, there will be no discussion on the noted items as well. So I shall now read the motion. Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board approve consent agenda items 6.1.1, 6.1.2.1, 6.1.2.2, as submitted at the May 2025 regular board meeting. May I have a mover, please? Trustee Carabella moves. Anybody online wants a second? If not, trustee Powell, seconds? I'll take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Sanders, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee, trustee Ohern Chanara?
In favor.
Trustee Filbert?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Yaboo?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Vice-Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
We have eight in favor, none opposed, no extension. The consent agenda carries. Shall skip over item number seven. Item number eight, shall move on to action items. Next order of business is action items. Number nine, 9.1, North Oakville, number three Catholic Elementary School Budget Approval. Superintendent Merrick, please speak to this item, and then I will read the motion and place on the table. I don't think your mic is working. Is it working? Oh, it's working, okay, go ahead. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. We have the budget approval for the North Oakville number three school construction project. This report is as presented at the April 2025 board meeting, and there is one resolution for consideration, which is to approve the project budget of approximately $32.7 million.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. I will now read the motion. Can it be put up on the screen, please? Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board approve the project budget not to exceed $32,707,069 for the North Oakville number three Catholic Elementary School and Child Care Center project in the town of Oakville. May I have a mover for this item, please? Trustee Sanders moves. Looking for a second, please, trustee Carabella. I shall now open up the floor to trustees for questions. Superintendent Merrick is here, and do we have other staff? Superintendent Merrick is fine. Do we have questions? I can open up question time. Three minutes for questions, seven minutes for debate, and then we'll take it to recorded vote. Trustees, please put your hand up if you have questions. Question time. No questions. Debate. No debate. I shall call the vote on this item. So trustees, we are voting on the motion in front of us. It's moved by trustee Sanders, seconded by trustee Carabella. I've called the vote on this item. Trustee Ohern Chanara, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee Filbert?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Yaboo?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Favor.
Trustee Agnew?
Favor.
Vice-Murphy?
Favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Favor.
Trustee Sanders?
Favor.
So we have eight in favor, none opposed, no extension. Motion carries. Shall now move on to item 9.2. All Lady of Victory Catholic Elementary School Edition Project Budget Approval. This item was a staff report at last board meeting. It's an action item now. Superintendent Merrick, please speak to this item, and then I'll read the motion. Thank you.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. And similar to the last report, this is for the All Lady of Victory Catholic Elementary School, School Edition Project. Again, the funding comes from the ministry, but the project is as presented at the April board meeting. And again, there's one motion for trustee consideration, which is to approve the project budget at approximately $13.2 million.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Can I have the motion on screen? Thank you. I will read the motion. Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board approve the project budget not to exceed $13,212,811 for All Lady of Victory Catholic Elementary School Edition and the Child Care Center project in the town of Milton. Looking for a mover, please? Trustee Murphy? Oh, just a second, okay. Trustee Agnew? Moves. Trustee Murphy, seconds? Okay, we shall open up question time, three minutes. Debate time, three minutes. Any questions, trustees? Seeing none. Online, any questions? No? Debate? No? Thank you, trustees. We shall now vote on the motion in front of us. Moved by trustee Agnew, seconded by trustee Murphy. I shall call the vote on this item. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Favor.
Trustee Agnew?
Favor.
Vice-Murphy?
Favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Favor.
Trustee Sanders?
In favor.
Trustee Ohern Chanara?
In favor.
Filbert?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Yaboo?
In favor.
So we have eight in favor, none opposed, no extension. Motion carries. We shall skip over 9.3, 9.4, and then we move on to item 9.5, which was 6.1.2.3 in the consent agenda. Policy II-44, Student Mental Health and Wellbeing. Trustee Ohern Chanara, could you please read the motion? Can we have it up on screen, please?
Be resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee that policy II-44, Student Mental Health and Wellbeing, be approved.
Thank you, trustee Ohern Chanara. This item has come to the board from policy and does not need a mover or a second. So trustee Ohern Chanara, this item was discussed in policy.
Sir, Chair, is that a question? Yes, it was. Yep.
Trustee Carabella has requested this item to be removed, and I believe trustee Carabella submitted an amendment to this item. So I've seen that amendment. Trustees have not seen that amendment. Okay, so this is my comment, trustee Carabella. This board meeting is reserved for board meetings, and I've said this many times, policies, when they come to the board for approval. And the reason, and the second thing is, when policies, change to policy comes, there are many moving parts to that. For example, this particular policy has to go to CAC and the other groups that are involved. So just making a change here, I don't think it's appropriate, and I wouldn't suggest making a change. I would suggest taking this back to policy, where all trustees get a chance to chime in, comment on that, rather than having discussion at the board meeting. Policies are not to be discussed. This item, I don't believe, came up at discussion at policy. So I fully think it's right that it goes back. All trustees have a chance to discuss this. It goes back to the consent committees. Superintendent Calera would like to take it to CAC and have the comments there. So there's many moving parts to that. So I would just, in fairness, the process, say that let it go through policy and come back to here. So trustee Carabella, I would strongly suggest that it go back to policy, make the changes, come back. I think that's the process, and that's the way it has been for a long time, and I would like to suggest that. So my request is that it goes back to policy. And I've always requested this in the past, and it's always gone back to policy. So I would, I would like to be fair with everybody, give everybody time to talk about it, discuss it, come back.
Can I just comment?
Sure, sure, sure. Go ahead.
We did discuss this. I was trying to bring this up at the policy, exactly what I was suggesting as an amendment. And so sometimes the phrasing doesn't come to you right at the policy meeting. We have a week. It comes up at the board meeting. It's, I think, a fairly simple amendment. If it requires to go to, you know, prolonged, to now go back to CAC, I don't understand, but it's fine. But I, I, I am concerned that we don't have the right to bring an amendment at a board meeting, and I think we do have that right. I will, I will, what's the word, follow your directions. It's not, you know, it's not a life and death situation amendment or something, but we do have the right to make amendments, and I'd like maybe discuss that off camera and seek some advice on that regarding our bylaws. Thank you.
So if there was something urgent about this policy that required to be dealt with right away, I would say, okay, let's consider that. I don't, don't see anything that is so urgent and, and stop. You agree with me, right? So.
I agree, it's not urgent.
So let's, let's just follow the process. Let's go back, let's all think through it. The simplest items, simplest changes, we make, we make the biggest blunders very often. So I just want to avoid, we do make those mistakes. So, so let's move it back to policy, if you're okay with. Trustee, I see your hand up. Trustee?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So just a question, just being cognizant of agenda setting for policy, for the chair of policy and the group of policy, does this just automatically go back to the next policy meeting? Like, when would this come on?
We got to move it, seconded.
Sorry, can I just finish my question?
Right.
Just recognizing that, you know, it's here now. So if it were to go back to policy, even if it was moved and seconded to go back to policy, would that be the next policy meeting? Would that be a policy meeting after? Like, when would that? I just know that we have other policies that are in the cycle that have to be reviewed. So if we just keep pushing things back to policy, does that not mess with the policy cycle as it's being laid out for the policy committee? That's just my question for that.
So, yeah, thank you. A good question there. So when we send it back to policy, we can put a date, say, like, to go to the next policy meeting. And if you leave it open-ended, then again, it's up to the chair of policy to fit it into the schedule out there. Okay, so, so I will leave it to you, trustee Carabella.
Or the chair of policy? The chair of policy?
Chair of policy, trustee Ohern Chanara, your thoughts?
Hi, thank you, everyone, and thank you for asking for my thoughts. Really, if it wants to go back to policy, it would be a motion to refer, which is bylaw 10.17. Trustee Carabella is also, I mean, if she wants to bring it forward at the board meeting, there's nothing stopping her. It's just the problem would be, it would be better to refer to the policy committee because then we can go back and discuss it again and have more fulsome conversation about it, trustee Carabella. I don't think there's anything stopping you, but I myself would vote against it without having time to digest it. That's my personal opinion.
Thank you, trustee Ohern Chanara, for your comments. The other comment about timing, trustee Agnew asked a comment about timing for this policy to be discussed. Any comments on that?
If the motion to refer states a specific date that it needs to go to policy, then I don't see any reason why it can't go to that policy committee. We have one more for the rest of the year.
Thank you. So with that, I'll pass it back to trustee Carabella.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion then to refer it back to the policy meeting in June.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Carabella, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So we have a motion to refer to policy. Trustee Carabella moves. Looking for a second, please. Trustee Sanders, I'll take this to a recorded vote, please. So we are talking about policy II-44, item 9.5. Trustee Carabella moves, seconded by trustee Sanders. Would you like to talk to that? Will we have this?
Well, I would be just really referring to the amendment. I think it can go back. I think it will enhance it, I hope.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm sending it back. I did send it very early today to all the trustees to see the amendment, so.
Thank you, trustee Carabella, I really appreciate that. Any other trustees have comments on this item? Not, I'll take it to a recorded vote. I shall call the vote on this item. Trustee Powell, how do you vote?
Opposed.
Trustee Kennedy?
Favor.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy, Vice-Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Sanders?
In favor.
Trustee Ohern Chanara?
In favor.
Trustee Filbert?
Obstein.
Trustee McGuire?
Obstein.
Trustee Yaboo?
Obstein.
Obstein? Was it abstained? Sorry. Thank you. Trustee Carabella?
Yes.
I'm in favor. I'm sorry.
Trustee, so we have six in favor, three opposed, no extension. Motion carries. This item will go back to policy. Thank you, trustees, for that. We now move on to item 9.6, policy II-49, English as a Second Language, ESL and English Literacy Development, ELD programs and services. Can we have the motion up on screen, please? Trustee, trustee Sanders, you can wait. It's a, it's a public session, you can state them.
Be resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee that policy II-49, English as a Second Language and English Literacy Development Programs and Services be approved.
Thank you, trustee Ohern Chanara. Trustee Sanders, you declared a conflict on this item, right? So there's nothing else to this item. Okay, so if there's no other further discussion, I shall take it to a recorded vote on this So trustee Sanders declares a conflict on this item. Trustee Kennedy, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Vice-Murphy?
Favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Ohern Chanara?
In favor.
Trustee Filbert?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Yaboo?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Favor.
We have seven in favor, none opposed, no extension. Motion carries. Policies approved. We shall now move on to our next order of business, which is staff reports, 10.1, Halton Hills Catholic Elementary School Boundary Review. School Boundary Review Committee recommendation. Superintendent Merrick, please present your report.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We actually have our planning services staff here tonight to talk over some of the details of the project, and then take back any questions from trustees at that time.
Good evening, everyone. Through you, Mr. Chair. Staff are here this evening to present the key outcomes and recommendations from the Halton Hills Catholic Elementary Schools Boundary Review Committee, in short, SBRC. It was really initiated to address long-term accommodation challenges due to growth and new development in the Georgetown area. So why was it needed? Halton Hills Elementary School Boundary Review is needed as Georgetown, Georgetown is experiencing increased residential development, placing pressure on local elementary schools. Several of the schools are already relying on portables, which isn't sustainable. The opening of Georgetown West in 2026, 2027 school year offers a critical opportunity offers a critical opportunity to adjust boundaries and balance enrollments in the area. So as part of the school boundary review process, an advisory school boundary review committee was created and tasked with reviewing all elementary boundaries for the local elementary schools in Halton Hills, establish school boundaries for the new school, Georgetown West Catholic Elementary School, and complete the review with implementation to take effect starting in September twenty twenty-six. At this point, I'll hand it over to my colleague Dylan Gunessekeren to go over the review process.
Thank you, Bronco. So the process, from October twenty twenty-four to May twenty twenty-five, the committee met nine times to discuss the options, both in person and virtually. The minimum requirement is three working meetings. So we had a good discussion and held more meetings than the requirement. Over this period, the SBRC reviewed a total of sixteen boundary options, each with changes to the regular track, optional French version, and the optional extender French program locations and boundaries. At the January fifteenth public meeting, three of these options were presented for wider community feedback. Following the feedback received through the online survey, the SBRC refined options, and then the committee presented its final preferred option at the April tenth virtual town hall meeting. In the survey that accompanied that public meeting, sixty-six percent of the respondents supported or strongly supported the preferred options selected by the committee. Based on this feedback, the SBRC identified that preferred option, which we identified as option B six E at that time, as its recommended boundary option. The SBRC felt that this option best met the six boundary review criteria and addressed the concerns raised by families as best as possible. We do have the details of the recommendation. They're provided on page four of the report, so that's page seventy-three of the, the package, with mapping provided in appendices B, C, and D. After today, there will be an opportunity for public delegations at the June seventeenth board meeting, and the recommendations will be presented as an action item at the same meeting for board consideration and approval. Thank you. Have any questions?
Thank you for your presentation. The staff report, I should now open up the floor to trustees for questions. Trustee Ohan Chanara, you're the floor.
Thank you, and thank you to everybody. As I was on most of these meetings, I forgot how much work boundary reviews are. The last time I was on a boundary review, I was a parent on the student council. So it's a lot of work, and I want to re- really reach out to our team and our parents on the committee because they don't get any extra money for attending a boundary review. And sometimes you're not the most favorite person in the room because boundary reviews really are trying to, to make the best decision for the greater of the good, right? And there will be some people that are maybe not so happy. So I really want to reach out, and over all those nine meetings, it was a lot of work, and everyone kept changing some of the ideas, but it was really interesting how organically it changed into the option that you're going to present. So, so thank you to the planning team. Thank you to our parents, if you're listening, on the boundary review team. It was, uh, it was really well done.
Thank you to you as well, Trustee Ohan Chanara. I've been there for one meeting or two meetings, and I've really seen the engagement out there. So thanks for that. Trustee Carabella, you're the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Do you anticipate any delegations coming or?
So, Trustee Carabella, delegations follow our delegation policy, there's a timeline for that.
Oh, true, okay.
So it was a very engaged boundary review by far, and very well planned, thought the people had been talking about things. I was just listening a couple of times and, but yeah, I think it was a really good boundary view. So delegations, if at all there are.
True, yes.
That have been the past years back, but we'll have to wait and see.
Okay. So my other question is on page five of seven, in the Extended French, you say here, due to enrollment pressure at Saint Francis of Assisi Catholic Elementary School, starting in twenty-eight, twenty-nine, an enrollment allocation buffer has been added at Holy Cross to accommodate the program should there be sufficient registrations. Can you explain an enrollment allocation buffer? What it means? Thank you.
Gunessekeren, us?
Thank you for that question, through the Chair. So currently, the extender French program in Halton Hills is located at Saint Francis of Assisi. I believe since it was introduced, I'm not exactly sure when it was introduced, but we haven't had sufficient registrations to run a full class. So that program has never really run in Halton Hills since it moved to Saint Francis. So what this, what the recommendation proposes is that in twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine, if there is sufficient registrations in the extended French program, we will accommodate that program at Holy Cross from twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine onward.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella, follow up?
Okay, so to understand that, then that school, Holy Cross, becomes the Extended French school?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other trustees have questions? Seeing none, once again, Superintendent Merrick, your team, Bronco, and Gunessekeren, thank you so much for all the work that you put into the process. A big shout out to our parents in Georgetown who participated, really appreciate the work done. And what's the next step? It's going to come to the next board meeting as an action item? Yeah, thank you once again. Thanks so much. We now move on to our next order of business, information items, eleven point one, Director's Report, Director Klein, please present your report.
Thank you, Chair. So we cover all the gambit of our multi-year strategic plan, and we'll start off with Student Achievement Plan. So Student Achievement Plan was formerly known as the Board Improvement Plan for many, many years, and since twenty twenty-three, the name for it has been Student Achievement Plan, and it has a framework that helps support it. The plan itself that we have as a board is on our, our website. This report in its PowerPoint version and its PDF version has the links to it, and I would encourage anyone to look at those. But what you should also know as part of that is there's feedback that is requested from parents, guardians, and staff, and I believe that went out today, and it goes up for about two weeks, so there could be feedback in terms of the impact of the Student Achievement Plan and thoughts on refining it. Sorry. Okay, good. Catholic Education Week recently passed last week, and we had, as part of that, we had some opportunities for students of all ages to display their creative prowess and to reflect the theme of the, of this year's Catholic Education Week, which is we must fan, fan the flame of hope that has been given to us. Comes from former Pope Francis. And our winners are there. If you do get the chance again, click on these because they're quite adorable and quite inspiring, and they run the gamut again from our, our grade three winner, Ethan, all the way through to someone who's composed a, a score that is very impressive, Angela from Saint Francis Xavier. Furthermore, Heroes of Hope, again, this connects with themes that we have globally in the Church and with the themes that have been promoted through the Diocese of Hamilton as well. And you were informed about two reports ago that every two months, there's a, a theme. We're just completing one that is focused on pilgrimage, images around pilgrimage as, as faithful Catholics. And each school was, and again, you can check out on our website, there's a whole array of beautiful photos of wonderful people from all our sites who have displayed and exemplify the, the theme of pilgrimage. In May and June, schools are invited to nominate individuals to, who personify or reflect our next theme, and that is solidarity. Solidarity, by the way, is at the heart of Pope Leo XIII, whom this current Pope is, chose his name for the fourteenth. And so it's very appropriate that seems to be the theme for the next two months. And again, they are to look at people in their staff and their community who exemplify, again, the three bulleted areas there, love for all, an active role in helping others, and faithful commitment to the common good. And the deadline for submission for those from our schools is at the end of the first week of, or second week of June, and then they'll be highlighted at the end of the month. The novena to the Holy Spirit is a variation on a theme that we've seen here in Ontario on this board for several years. For the past several years, this board has participated in the novena to the Sacred Heart of Jesus, and that was organized by the Institute for Catholic Education, otherwise known as ICE. This year, as this solemnity takes place in the month of June, ICE has decided to focus the novena on the Feast of Pentecost, which of course ends the Easter season, and in this year, it's June the eighth. This offers a fitting opportunity to focus on the Holy Spirit in this jubilee year, when reminded that hope is constantly renewed. And this will begin on May the twenty-ninth, and those prayers go to, through June the sixth, and there is a resource package created by ICE, and that is going to be available to all schools. That involves and includes a wide array of prayers, videos, and social media posts for those schools and those communities as well. Celebrating achievement, affirming identity, inspiring futures, is a grad luncheon for Black graduating students within our system, and it's being held on June the fourth at Saint Ignatius Loyola Catholic Secondary School. This is an event that hosts Black graduating students from across this board, who have been active members or leaders in their schools, Black Student Union or Black Student Association. The luncheon will support the goals of dismantling anti-black racism by creating a dedicated space for celebrating the success of our Black graduates. It's free, and of course lunches provided for our students. Sports continue through this month. Just trying to move some things out of my way here. We have Special Olympics that begin in June eleventh, will be held at Saint Francis Xavier. And we have the elementary interschool track meets, and they, of course, as they usually are divided up into regional zones, and the dates are there, and there are rain dates provided as well. The championship meet is on Wednesday, June eleventh. Of course, you're invited to, to take part in that as well and witness the, the fun and the fellowship and the athleticism and the commitment of hundreds and hundreds of staff to this. Just a reminder to trustees. Parents and staff, parents and staff, that Special Education Services will be providing and hosting a special education summer learning program throughout almost the entire month of July, and that will take place half days in the morning, so it's cooler, of course, at Our Lady of Victory Elementary School. It's supported by staff there, namely, we'll have educational assistance, behavior assistance, and depending on the makeup of students, possibly, and/or child and youth care counselors as well. Focus in these summer schools are functional literacy, numeracy, and social skills, and information has already been given to the schools themselves in order to facilitate the, the students getting on board. Pride Month begins in two weeks, and as in previous years, all our schools and the Catholic Education Center here will fly the pride flag proudly during the month of June. Beginning this year and moving forward, schools will raise the pride flag on the first instructional day in June. We always get in trouble when we have a weekend that has the start of a month, so we decided that the first instructional day would be that, obviously, that Monday, but it's the second, and so we'll begin on the second. This information will be communicated to all parents and guardians through a central message that will be sent the last week of May. Part of our work here at this school board and other school boards do the same, is to try and ensure that the, the staff that does the teaching are supported as well as possible. You're probably aware that the College of Teachers provides a almost endless list of additional qualifications courses, just often just known as AQs, and AQs almost always have three parts to them, part one, part two, then a specialist, almost always. And part of our Indigenous Action Plan is to support our teachers in supporting our students by helping offset the costs of some of these courses, and that is First Nations, Maytee, and Inuit Peoples, Understanding Traditional Teachings, Histories, Current Issues, and Cultures. That's a master's course, by the way, with all that, part one, two, and specialists. And what the board is doing with its funds is encourage teachers to apply, and we don't have an endless amount of money, of course. There'll be a subsidy of up to $500 for sixty applicants, and that will again help build up their skills and help, help build up the excellence of education for our students. So it's a, a good investment, and I would entertain gladly any questions now.
Thank you, Director Klein, for your presentation. Trustees, please raise your hands, if you have questions for Director Klein. Trustee Carabella, hand is up, visit for now or to pass?
I have questions.
Sure, go ahead.
Just the last one here. So would this be one of the requirements that are needed for the teachers to teach the, the grade eleven English course?
Want to go back one slide?
Yes, the training. Thank you.
Director Klein?
I'm trying to go back one slide. There. I'm looking over at Superintendent Kroll on this, and I think the answer is no, not in terms of a requirement. Am I right?
Certainly through you, Mr. Chair, and, and should agree with Director Klein. It's not a requirement per se. It would certainly assist teachers teaching that MBE course. We've been doing professional development with all of our teachers. So Sherry Sabo, who is well-known to members around the board, has been going to all of our schools with our English consultants and providing training for all of the teachers teaching MBE to make sure that they feel comfortable, that they know which resources they have available to them, what supports are available. This would be something that would be done in addition for those teachers, because we, you know, even with sixty spots, we couldn't possibly, we're not funded to, to provide this to all the teachers that are teaching that. We're certainly encouraging as many teachers as possible to take it though. Good question.
Trustee Carabella, follow up?
Well, the follow-up is how much does the full course cost? Am I allowed to know that, or is that?
That's a good question. I'm trying to remember what they go for now. I'm going to say eight hundred, nine hundred?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. It ranges depending on the university that they're going through. I, I've seen them as low as in the six hundreds, up to sort of almost eight hundred, but they're sort of in that six to eight hundred dollar range.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Carabella. Trustee Kennedy, you're next.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Just wondering about the track and field meets, specifically around like transportation. Good call. Just wondering about the track and field meets and other school activities. So I know there's a track and field meet on the twenty-sixth next week, or sorry, a soccer, boy soccer, grade, I think, four or five, six next week. So there's no transportation in some cases, but the track and field meet there is. It's just how do we decide when we provide transportation from school for activities? And what we do?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Kroll, but one of the things that I think we bear in mind is with certain sports, basketball, you might have three strings, maybe fifteen athletes in it, soccer, obviously, you have a few more. Track and field, you're going to have maybe hundreds, depending on the size of the school. So I think that's one factor, but I'll turn it over to Superintendent Kroll.
Yeah, certainly through you, Mr. Chair. That is the sort of the determining factor. So funding for transportation for events like this is not provided by the board level, so it'd be up to the school to provide transportation. For small events, like the Minecraft event that was mentioned earlier, or a soccer tournament, schools usually don't provide transportation because that cost would be pretty significant, either to be picked up by the school or passed on to parents, or something like track and field, when you're sending thirty to forty kids, the cost of transportation is much lower. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Kennedy, follow up?
Yes, several question. Just regarding achieving, let's say, we had a board meeting on the twenty, the eighteenth of March about international student program recruitment trips, and there was to be a recommendation on April the twenty-second, the board meeting, to approve three trips. I didn't see that in the meeting last, last month, and I don't see it today. Just wondering why that's not included?
I can answer part of that because a staff report, square our bylaws, may be an action item at the future board meeting. So not all staff reports are, are action item. But again, I'll pass this on to Director Klein for, for details, so.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. That was withdrawn at the time, and I think it's still, still under review.
Thank you. So, follow up?
Go ahead.
So, so are we, will we be attending these, these sessions next year? We have, it's like Portugal, Mexico, and Paris, or at this time, I'll commit it to those.
I think Director Klein just said that it's under review. Really a staff decision.
So follow up? So do we know when we'll get an answer on the review as to whether staff will be attending?
Director Klein, do you have any comments on that, or time?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't venture a guess on the timeline of that.
Just wondering why trustees weren't provided a communication that that would be part of the agenda in April.
As I explained, you have a lot of staff reports today, but does not mean that they will be an action item. It could be an action item, it all depends. And again, it's, I'm not, quite frankly, it's, it's, it's an operational matter, it's a staff matter, some staff has to be sent. So even if it's brought as an action item, it's, it's up to, I would really put it with staff, that they will bring it forward. But if it's under review, I will take care of what it is under.
No, no, I understand. But if it says it's coming at the next board meeting and it isn't, can we get a communication that it's not being included as opposed to just not showing up in the package at all? Is there some communication ahead of time?
No, it does not have to come to the next board meeting. Yeah, so again, it's a staff report. And again, as Director Klein said, it's under review, so. Yeah, but there's no communication that needs to come to the Board of Trustees. Would we have been an action item? Staff was ready with the with the review done, then it would have come as an action, as an action item. Director Klein, please clarify if I'm right or wrong. You're not ready with the report?
Yeah, you're right.
I'm just saying, if we're not ready, maybe just let us know it's not coming.
It's a staff report. The process is if staff brings it forward as an action item, then it could move forward. Staff does not want to go it. There are lots of reports that come here and gets to get me come up another point in time, so. Just leave it at that. Okay, any further questions from trustees? Trustee Yebor, your hand is up, you're the floor.
Thank you through you, Chair. I'm sorry, I'm a little sick, so please bear with me. But I just wanted to make some comments in terms of the luncheon for the black students. I just wanted to say that I just think that's a really great way to promote an open space for black students and really encourage excellence and, you know, acceptance among the black community in the HDSB. And then it also reminded me of Kentay Stoles, which is going to be worn by some black identifying students throughout our board. And so I'm just really happy that the HDSB is supporting that and just making sure that black students are able to showcase their heritage as they graduate. So I'm really excited to graduate as well and just be able to promote and just take part in these things as well. And then also, just missing the pride flag, I'm just really happy to hear that efforts are being made to make sure that all students are welcome and supported in the school. And I really hope that this continues for all the years to come.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, really appreciate it. Student Voice, Director Klein, just note that. Any other trustees have questions for Director Klein? Saying none, thank you Director Klein for your report. We shall now move on to item eleven point two, student, Alton Student Transportation Services Annual School Hour Report Twenty Twenty Five, Twenty Six School Year. Superintendent Lof, please present your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. Attaches HSTS Annual School Report for Twenty Five, Twenty Six, so for next year. Please know we have no changes for next year, so there's no changes targeted for next year. That is all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Superintendent Lof. Trustees, any questions for Superintendent Lof? And I want to thank those trustees who attended the last meeting of the HSTS, really appreciate you taking some time. Thanks for that. But we shall move on to item eleven point three, Twenty Twenty Five, Twenty Six Budget Estimate Core Education Funding. Once again, Superintendent Lof, there's no report.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, Mr. Chair, there is not a report. We have not received any information on our core education funding for Twenty Five, Twenty Six. As a reminder, Core Ed funding is, supports our school operations, our staffing, our programs. And typically, these funding details are announced in early spring. Last year, we had it in April of Twenty Twenty Four for Twenty Four, Twenty Five school year. Given the delay of the funding announcements, the short turnaround staff has to prepare the budget and the current funding unknowns, which obviously we don't know what our funding is and the GSNs or Core Ed makes up the majority of our revenue. Staff will not present any program enhancements or new initiatives during the June approval process. Staff will be presenting a status quo budget in June. However, any programs or enhancements or new initiatives will be brought to trustees during the presentation of revised estimates in December. Mr. Chair?
Thank you Superintendent Lof. So we don't have questions to be. Superintendent Lof, there's no report because we don't have the funding. All the boards in the province are waiting. Lots of decisions to be made. They all on pause or hold. That's a challenge for our board, for our school community. Trustee Kennedy, you have a question? Yeah. Oh, sorry. Trustee Ohan Chanara, you have a question?
Hi, dear. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for recognizing me. Superintendent Lof, can you ever recall a time when the this funding was so late in the year?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Ohon Zerota. The only time that I recall it being this late, it was in June. If you remember during COVID, I believe it was June nineteenth that we had that first year of COVID. And at that point in time, we had an extension to have our budget done in August of that year. That's the latest that I recall it being, receiving our funding.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, just for clarification. So status quo budget, nothing's changes until you can see what the funding is going to be until the end of this year, right?
Superintendent Lof?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's correct. We, obviously with enrollment and staff and classroom teachers, that's different. It's dependent upon enrollment. What I mean by, if you remember in the past, we've had program enhancements, new initiative, changes to the board. As it stands right now, we just don't have the opportunity to kind of bring that to senior admin, to discuss it, as we do not know what our funding is going to be, if there's any changes to any of the metrics, any of the percentages, benefits, whatnot. So it's something that we really can't make an educated decision on right now. So we are keeping it status quo for what we currently have, under the assumption that the funding will remain the same. Having said that, we have not received any indication that it is or what the changes are. We haven't received any documents, anything like that.
So kind of like playing darts in the dark.
Yeah, it's 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 challenging for us to, all we can do is prepare for when it comes out, to have everything that we can have ready to go. But we are waiting on on what our revenue is. So it's it's difficult to do that when you don't know what your funding is. And when the majority of our funding, eighty-five to ninety percent, is from the Ministry of Education, it makes it very difficult and challenging to to budget accordingly.
Thank you. Trustee Kennedy?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Just wondering for the current budget we're in right now, the current cycle. How are we looking there roughly, say, as of April? Are we kind of ahead, in line, bit behind, deficit, a budget? How does that?
I think we had a report of the last meeting.
We did through you, Mr. Chair. We're we're looking in line right now, Trustee Kennedy. I don't have the information in front of me at the office tonight, but as it stands right now, so far, so good. No surprises that we're aware of at this point.
Trustee Carabella?
Thank you. I'm just wondering about this in status. Status quo budget, is that something that other boards do? Is this a common way of handling this?
Superintendent?
I'm not sure what other boards are per se. Worries obviously with our board and 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 the tradition, what we're, the position that we're put in right now. I will say, when I say status quo, Trustee Careful, if we need more teachers, we have more enrollment, that doesn't factor into this. What I mean more is on the supplies and services line, things like that. So we're not making any changes per se to what we have right now. But if we have more enrollment, we need more teachers, yeah, sorry, that's not part of this discussion. Obviously, we make that work.
Thank you.
And just a comment, I have been in touch with chairs of other boards and they have the same concerns. Every board in the province is having this concern of not having the funding available because big decisions need to be made internally here, so that's where we are. Thank you. Okay, with that, we shall move on to our next order of business is miscellaneous information. Twelve point one, student trustee update. Student trustees, please present your report.
All right, so I'm starting off with achieving and Director Klein spoke a little bit to our point in his report. But we just wanted to celebrate all of the student athletes. As the year comes to a close, we realize that through summer, fall and winter sports, a lot of our students have worked tirelessly, not only academically, but also also athletically. And all of our schools are really proud to be celebrating these students and recognizing them through our athletic banquets where students are celebrated for the achievement. They typically receive plaques, medals, awards, all of which commemorating their experience and athletic contributions to the HDSB. So we're super grateful that students have these opportunities to not only bond and connect with their peers through sports, but also be recognized for their outstanding athletic achievement and skills. I have a special shout out to all of the participants of our senior girls rugby final that happened earlier today. I'm super proud that Saint FX Knights are the winners, but really want to commend the Assumption Girls on such a great game. Additionally, for the believing, HDSB students had the opportunity to participate in several initiatives over Catholic Education Week, including participating in the Pilgrims of Hope Video Challenge, which we are happy to see that a lot of students were able to engage in their creative side and align that with their faith. But are also proud to have taken part in our boardwide walk with Jesus. I personally, along with other students within my high school and area, had the privilege of helping out local elementary schools. Allowing us to not only foster that connection between secondary and elementary, but also help develop the faith of our younger HDSB students by being good examples of how we can live out Catholic faith, especially during such an important week, and I'll allow Lauren to continue with believing.
Yeah, so during Catholic Education Week, I also had the pleasure of being able to attend and participate in the Ontario Catholics Virtual Soon Youth Day, which is held virtually on Catholic Education Week every year by OCSA. And it was a really, really great day. We started the day off with a keynote speaker, Phelan Kixanaway. And he is an advocate for Indigenous youth and Indigenous education. And he told us a lot of different stories that really illustrated the importance of Indigenous education and implementing Indigenous teachings and Indigenous cultures within our education system. Another highlight of the day too was attending virtual mass with Bishop Cosby. He is wonderful to attend mass with, very insightful, and it was a great way to reflect on Catholic education through the lens of our faith. We were also too, as student trustees, I've been working with some student trustees from across the province to create a document called Indigenous Influencers, which essentially looks to highlight the contributions, positive contributions of Indigenous peoples to our to our country. And this hopes to kind of teach us students about this in schools and Catholic schools throughout the province. So I suggest that you guys all check out the document, it's really, really important. I learned a lot from hearing the presentation from my peers and stuff. And yeah, overall, it was such a pleasure to be able to attend that day. Thank you. Pass it off to Isabel for belonging.
All right, so yeah, moving on to the belonging tour. So there's a lot going on in May and that has been going on in order to foster a sense of belonging for students within the school communities. So Saint Inness of Loyola and Saint Frank, Saint Francis Xavier are organizing Multi-Culture Day, which aims to celebrate the diversity of cultures present in the school communities. So as Holton is a really diverse region, we really commend these students for creating opportunities for themselves and their peers to celebrate the beauty of diversity and culture. And I also want to add the events of Relay for Life that are going on in our schools as well. These are just such a great way to foster community in our schools and just really kind of create a sense of belonging in these events. So they're really great initiatives as well. So additionally, we want to commend and thank the board's Special Education Department for hosting the Spring Fling's Dance for students in our special education programs throughout the board. And we've heard some great praise from students who attended the dance and they really appreciate the ability to spend time with their friends. So thank you to Superintendent Jack Calera and her team for pulling, for putting this great opportunity together. So just going to move on to becoming. So from May twenty second to the twenty fifth, me, Lauren and Sophia will have the chance to attend OSTA Ago AGM, which is the annual general meeting, where we'll go through professional development and learn a lot more about opportunities as outgoing student trustees. Incoming student trustees, Valini, Ropier and Maya Sophia will also be attending and they'll be learning a lot more about the role and getting really insightful experience and connections as well. And so as we near the end of the year as well, that also means that our last Senate meeting is very fast approaching on May twenty eighth. So we've gone through countless discussions and just amazing initiatives and proposals. And these student leaders really show so much dedication, not only as students, but you know, to their classmates and their school communities. So at our last meeting, we really hope to further discuss new goals and ideas for this new year's Senate, while also having fun and reflecting on the hard work that senators have put in this year. So just a quick shout out to our Senate, Senate Secretary, Valini P., and our media representatives, Dante C. and Abiha F. For their extremely helpful efforts this year and to all student senators for showing up and getting their voices heard in our board.
Thank you, student trustees for presenting your report. Thank you. Once again, thank you, student trustees for presenting your report. You have been really busy in school. Shall now open up the floor to trustees for questions. Trustee Carabella, you have your hand up, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to comment and ask, I know a lot of elementary schools since the month of May, they honor Our Lady with various initiatives and rosary or May crowning. Were there any initiatives at the secondary school that recognize Our Lady in the month of May that you can share with us?
Trustee, go ahead.
Ah, yeah, so um, in the month of May and stuff, specifically my chaplain, Chaplain Wayne at Loyola, he's been doing a lot of prayers that are dedicated to Our Lady and stuff. So we've been able to really kind of meditate on that and think about that. So there's definitely lots of opportunities and stuff, but also too, we do talk about Mary quite a bit in our religion classes and everything. And we talk about her quite a bit as well when we have the Stations of the Cross. She's a big part of that and we often recreate that in our Easter liturgies and stuff. So there's definitely lots of places that I think Sophia wants to hit.
Yeah, I can add quickly as well. On our daily prayers, our chaplain, I think in quite a few of the schools, at least the students I've spoken to, the chaplains do a great job at coming up with prayers and even giving background to each of the days relating to Mary. And there's also been more information provided through our learning commons, like through our library. I know specifically my librarian does different informational pieces specifically about Mary and the like Catholic faith during this time. So I think while they differ from the elementary school efforts, there is still a focus on it. It's just more integrated into the day versus a whole event.
Trustee Yebor?
Yes, thank you through you, Chair. I also just want to add, yeah, in my school particularly as well, the chaplains have done like a really great job at just making sure that multiple prayers are going on throughout the day in the mornings that are pertaining to Mary and just different parts of our religion. And our chaplain also allows students to come in and lead the prayers, which just gives them a lot of insight into leadership and also, you know, just being able to be a leader in our faith as well.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, does it answer your question?
Thank you very much. Wonderful.
Thanks, well done. So any other trustees have questions? So once again, really appreciate your report and bringing back the board of trustees and sharing what you all are doing in schools. Appreciate that. By the way, the shout out to trustee Filbert for wonderful arts, being the emcee of the arts program. Was there? Thank you. Well, well done. We shall move on to item twelve point two, OCSDA update. Trustee Ohan Chanara, do you have a, an update for trustees?
Hi, and good evening through you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things. One, we did have the first mandatory live training last week. I did attend it, it was pretty good. Reminded me of some things that maybe over six years I'd forgotten, so we can listen to it, but remember, I'll continue to say the due date is the end of August this year to have those four mandatory trainings completed. The next one is tomorrow night, live on Governance and Conflict Resolution. The second thing I wanted to bring up to everybody, and I just sent it to you for full disclosure, but the AGM, so the Canadian Trustees Association is meeting in Halifax this year, early June. It's interesting to go because remember, we only have three provinces, Alberta, Ontario, Saskatchewan, that are fully funded in 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 our country. So it's interesting to talk to other trustees and the struggles that we have. And we also, you know, try to support our other provinces as far as hosting these types of things, because this one only has three people organizing the entire event. So we try to support from the other provinces. And I did send you some resolutions. And if you have any questions or when I come back, please, please ask me, because I'll be willing to really have a big discussion about what I learn when I go there.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara. Trustees, any questions or comments for trustee Ohan Chanara? Saying none, thank you trustee Ohan Chanara for presenting your your update. We shall skip item twelve point three, twelve point five. Shall move on to open question period number fourteen. Director Klein, have any questions been submitted?
No.
Thank you, Director Klein. In camera, item number fifteen is the next order of business. We have to go back into camera. May I have a motion to go back into camera, looking for a mover, please? Trustee Agnew moves, looking for a seconder. Trustee Powell, all in favor? And video opposed? Saying none, motion carries. We shall now move into camera. Let's take a break of about three or four minutes and then we shall log out and log back in. Thank you. Thank you.